All right. Again, good evening, everyone. I will call the Town Council Personnel and Employments Committee Special Meeting to Order. The time is 5:31. I will take a roll call. Myself, Chair Andrew Baumgartner, Counselor David McBride.
Yes.
Is here and Counselor Scott Westerville is here. So all committee members are present, calendar and communications. We have just a pretty, we have a pretty extensive agenda this evening. As we discussed at our last meeting, a little bit of a backlog from the previous council with filling some reappointments and certainly vacancies. As well as new appointments to various boards and commissions and a new board in our town. The Citizens and Police Committee. So we will be tackling those items this evening. And everyone should have received an agenda. I know there have been several changes with respect to the agenda over the last few weeks. Just want to thank Clerk McCauser and her staff for their prompt responses on many questions I've had and and you know, their assistance in putting together this agenda as well. You know, as mentioned before, the previous meeting, they received the applications for all ABCs and really kick off that process. So just again, want to thank Betty and her team for their assistance in particular, or assistant or I believe either Deputy or Assistant Clerk, Crystal Alexander, and also the assistants of Lisa Hilton, the Town Manager's Executive Assistant. So with that, I will kick off business. As you know, we have several reappointments for several boards and commissions. And many of these appointments, we had received at the previous meeting. And these appointments were for Planning and Zoning, the Groton Shellfish Commission. And so with that, I would like to make a motion to approve some of the reappointments we have. So we will start with. We will start with the Inland and Wetlands Agency. So with that, I will make a motion to approve Barbara Block of 142 Bayview Avenue to the Inland Wetlands Agency. Do I have a motion in a second?
I'll make the motion. Are you, did you make the motion, Counselor?
Yes.
Okay, I'll second the motion.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, 3-0-0. Onto David Scott. I'll make a motion to reappoint David Scott of 191 Pequois Avenue to the Inland and Wetlands Agency with the term expiring December 31st, 2023. So moved.
Second, Westerville.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Onto Unisuppin'. I will make a motion to reappoint Unisuppin' of 120 Cedar Road of Mystic to the Inland and Wetlands Agency with the term expiring December 31st, 2023. So moved.
Second, McBride.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Onto Barbara Williams. I'll make a motion to reappoint Barbara Williams, 129 Elm Street, knowing to the Inland and Wetlands Agency with the term expiring December 31st, 2023. So moved.
Second, Westerville.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries unanimously. So that closes out our Inland and Wetlands Agency. Congratulations to Barbara, David, Eunice and Barbara on your reappointments to the Inland Wetlands Agency. Onto the, onto Parks and Recreations Commission. So I will make a motion to reappoint Francis Whitney of 112 Deerfield Ridge Drive to the Parks and Recreation Commission. So moved.
McBride will second.
Motion and second. There's been a motion and second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention. Motion carries unanimously, 3-0-0. Congratulations for Fran Whitney on your reappointment to the Parks and Recreation Commission. Onto Planning and Zoning Commission. I will make a motion to reappoint alternate Kevin Fiftell of 5 West Mystic Avenue, Mystic, to the Planning and Zoning Commission with the term expiring December 31st, 2026. So moved.
Second, Westerville.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Counselor McBride?
I apologize, I was on mute.
No, it's okay.
I'm in favor of that.
Okay, excellent. And I, so that motion carries unanimously, 3-0-0. Onto Stephen Hudecheck of 33 Leeward Avenue for reappointment as an alternate to the Planning and Zoning Commission with the term expiring December 31st, 2026. So moved.
Second, invite McBride.
There's been a motion and second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstention, motion carries unanimously, 3-0-0. Onto Barbara Tarbox of 74 Algonquin Drive Mystic. I'll make a motion to reappoint Starbucks to the Planning and Zoning Commission with the term expiring December 31st, 2026. So moved.
Second, Westerville.
There's been a motion and second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries unanimously, 3-0-0. Onto reappointment of Howzad of 140 High Meadow Lane Mystic. I'll make a motion to reappoint Howzad to the Planning and Zoning Commission with the term expiring December 31st, 2026. So moved.
Second, McBride.
There's been a motion and second. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries unanimously, 3-0-0. Congratulations, Mr. Fiftell, Mr. Hudecheck, Ms. Tarbox and Mr. Zod for your reappointments to the Planning and Zoning Commission. With that, we will move on to the appointment of we'll move on to the appointment of or the appointment to fill the vacancy for the Permanent School Building Committee. I believe we have Shontae Duzon on. I will elevate Shontae as a panelist.
I did that for you, sir.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
It'll take your second to get over.
All right. Hello, Ms. Duzon. Hi, Ms. Duzon. Welcome to the Personnel and Employments Committee meeting. Thank you so much for obviously joining us this evening, but also submitting an application to join one of our ABCs, a very important one, as it as your work directly relates to the welfare and education of our children here in Groton. So thank you for stepping up and offering to serve our community and the counselors, if you have any questions for Ms. Duzon before we vote on her nomination for Permanent School Building Committee. Any counselors have any questions?
No question. Just thank you for serving and supporting me. Appreciate your dedication.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And maybe one question I have is, you know, what, and we have your application as well. We can get through that, but I think, you know, all the counselors have read it and it's included in the agenda. But you know, what are you most looking forward to in terms of serving on this board?
I'm looking forward. It's going to be my second committee that I'm on. I am new to serving the residents of Groton. I look forward to making, helping to navigate in making some decisions and just serving, growing in my position and really just getting to know everyone and making a difference in Groton, hopefully for our residents and the community as a whole.
Wonderful. And again, we thank you for your interest. I will note that you, your professional background is in teaching. So I think it's quite fitting outside of the district. So obviously quite fitting that, you know, you're looking to serve on the school building committee. So with that, I will entertain in or
Chairman, before you put a motion on the floor.
Yep.
I really, really need your committee to, to pay attention to the applications. I mean, Shontae is fantastic and we could put her on this. Due diligence is very important when it comes to our boards and commissions. Now, positions become available here and there. Some of them hang around for a long time. But we just received this application on the 7th of February. So it hasn't, her application has not been vetted by anyone else. And I know that the council has the ability to appoint, even if a committee, town committee does not endorse. That's, that's the council, not this committee. Our committee has recommendations to the council. But they take, your committee takes recommendations from the political parties first. Or if it's 60 days after expiration, so in other words, April 8th, this application would be, if it had, if her application was not recommended for appointment by a political party, then this committee would have fair game. So I caution you only because if you set a precedent that changes the way things have been done, typically, there's always a strange one out there. It sets up a road further to say, hey, I wanted to apply to that commission and I didn't get to because you know, you went ahead and appointed somebody a few days after she applied. So I, now that she's certainly capable of serving on this committee, she's certainly capable. They never deny that and wanted to be on it, but I just want you to understand that a lot of these applications tonight have not gone through the proper channels and you're setting a precedent. So and it's dangerous, it's dangerous.
Madam Clerk, duly noted. I will note that we have worked with your office and over the last month in crafting, more than a month in crafting agendas for our previous meeting and this meeting. As you will note, that every application sent directly to your office, as long as they are a registered voter, is immediately sent over to the town committees for review. If they are registered in a party, the Democratic Party, those applications go directly to the Democratic Town Committee. And if they're registered as Republicans, they go directly to the Republican Town Committee. And if I'm not mistaken, if they're unaffiliated, they go to both town committees. With that said,
You are mistaken on your, you're mistaken. You do not receive, your committee does not receive any applications except unaffiliated. The party affiliated go to the party that applicant is registered to. This is a practice that's been in for 35, I 35 years.
Yes. So, so I duly noted, again, I, as I just stated, Democratic applications go to the DTC and the Republican applications go to the RTC. I was a bit unclear on the unaffiliated, so.
Unaffiliateds go to everybody, including the chairman of the part of the border commission that they're applying for. So you might get, you might get recommendation from a chair.
Absolutely. As I already stated, so.
You did mistake that you received all applications. You do not, only unaffiliated until, until another step happens, but you know, the problem on all of this, and I don't want to diminish anything. And I'll, I'll just leave the meeting if it's going to cause a problem. But you do have miscommunication from my office and actually today's last, is Crystal's last day. She was not deputy. She was an assistant. And no hard, she's a wonderful person, but she miscommunicated a lot of things as did, as did a lot of other people.
I will, I will not speak of that. That is not, you know, again, I've enjoyed.
That's what caused a lot of problems, I'm telling you. So anyway, I will bow out and I'll be back later.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I will note again that we received all of these applications after they were sent to the Town Committee for Review. There, as the clerk had articulated, there seemed to have been a miscommunication. With that said, due to miscommunications, we are still within despite miscommunications, we're still within our right to review these applications. As I will note, Shontae Duzon's application is very thorough. And I, I believe it would be a mistake to delay appointments to critical committees at this time. Given that I support her, her appointment and I hope we can move forward with much business to be discussed. Counselor McBride?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk, for that information. And as you all know, this is somewhat new to me. So I'm not in a rush to do anything without following proper process. So, and again, this is very new to me. So if there is something that we're doing that's, or potentially doing in the future that is disrupting past practice, I would err on the side of, can we wait a few more weeks for this? I mean, it's, it's been four months. I don't think a few more weeks makes a difference. And it's again, no indication on, on Shontee or any of the others. But if we're, if we're doing something that we shouldn't, shouldn't be, I, you know, I kind of lean towards why rush it? So this is more of a discussion with the two of you on what your thoughts are. But I'm not one to, to move forward without following the proper process that has been established for, you know, for 35 years. If it's, if it's worked for 35 years, I tend to tend to think it's, it's done for a good reason. So I kind of looking for more guidance on your thoughts.
Again, the, the process was followed on by our part, you know, we received the applications. All of these applications directly.
I am here to answer if you need.
From, from the clerk's office, those, I believe the mis, perhaps the miscommunication came from internal discussions amongst the Democratic Town Committee with the clerk's office. I'm not privy to those. Those will still not make any impact in terms of Republican appointments or, or unaffiliated appointments. So I think it is a unique position with a few applications. But with that said, we did receive applications back from the town committees through, by virtue of those applications being sent back to the clerk's office. So.
You didn't, you only got them from one person. I'm so sorry. The chairman said that the town committee did not, the Democrats endorsed anyone. Only the chairman of the nominating committee who has no power sent those.
Again, I received this application from the clerk's office for approval. So we're going to do that. With that, I'll make a motion to approve Shontae Duzon to the, to the Permanent School Building Committee.
Mr. Chairman, I just had a question.
I'm sorry, Counselor Westerville?
Um, is there, having this come up right now, is there some way that we would know? I mean, I have different copies of the agenda and the last one that I just opened up is the one I got today. Is there any indication in there about where this application in particular fell in the process? I did not think that they would come to us if they had not been vetted. So I guess I'm just kind of confused on if there's anything in this that would have alerted us that, you know, it hadn't gone through other committees.
No, and not, not as of today, within the last few hours. So the DTC chose to move every, every applicant with no objection. No, no endorsement to facilitate the personnel and appointment process. So I want to make that abundantly clear. We, we have followed the process every step of the way. So I understand, I hear you.
I'm sorry, Chairman, you are, you are miscommunicating. You have not followed the process properly and your counselors, your counselors on this committee really do need proof. And there's no hurry on anything. Calm down and do it right.
I absolutely understand. I appreciate, appreciate your words. So with that, I will entertain a motion to appoint Ms. Duzon to the Permanent School Building Committee. Well, I will make a motion to appoint Ms. Duzon to the Permanent School Building Committee. Is there a second?
I guess I'm still a little confused, so I'm just going to withhold for now.
All right, seeing none, we will withhold the appointment of Ms. Duzon until the following meeting. I apologize, Ms. Duzon. I believe the next process will be the Democratic Town Committee having to vote on you or recommendation to the group again. Irrespective of that decision or that vote, we are still within your, our right to appoint you at the next meeting and I hope and implore this board to do so. I apologize for the inconvenience this evening and please, we hope you continue having an interest in serving this board as I believe you're perfectly capable of doing so.
I am definitely still interested. I thank you all for your time and your attention to detail to the process as well. I look forward to the next meeting where I can have an opportunity to be there again and hopefully be appointed to the Permanent School Building Committee. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Duzon. Have a good evening.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. I very much appreciate it and I apologize if my naivety has delayed this process because I am trying to learn as much as I can about it. So thank you.
I am, I am learning from you guys as well. So I definitely appreciate it.
Thank you, and I apologize as well.
It's okay, man. You're welcome.
Thank you. I'm going to elevate two folks who have their hands on Dana Semiraro and Portia Bordelon. Counselor Bordelon. Counselor Bordelon?
Ah, thank you. I first just want to say that I'm a little confused and kind of a bit embarrassed at comments that were made pertaining to a now no longer employee, that now all of a sudden is making mistakes and giving misinformation. With that, as a person who also serves on the nominations committee for the Democratic Party, the emails had come out. And at the time, yes, they were not endorsing anybody, but they agreed for process to move things along that they would, they would move all the names forward. It's a little frustrating to me because as a person first got involved in the town and actually, one of the other folks who, for a reason for decreasing one of our other boards in our town was for the lack of membership or involvement on committees that we have been sitting that have been vacant for so long. Here we are tonight and a woman that comes before us who I happen to say that I happen to know quite well, who sir, my son has gone to school with, you know, and she got involved, you know, recently and is, has done great things in the town and is a mother of a student in the Groton Public School System, which also was not stated tonight. And then all of a sudden tonight, it's fine that Mrs. McCauser wants to talk about process, but it's within the window. So do we want to wait three, four, five more weeks to hope that more applications come in? When in the past, and we talk about precedent, we have yet to be able to fill all of our boards and commissions and different ABCs because we don't have enough interests. And here we have someone before us who did the process, submitted the application, and now it's too fast. So I'm just a little confused as to what direction we're going here. And it's a little concerning to me as a voter, as a nominations on the Democratic Committee and as a town counselor, ex-official member of this meeting. I feel like certain opinions were injected into this in a way to change that. And it's quite embarrassing as Mrs. Duzon sits here before us. Nothing was said about anybody else that we were reappointing. Other people might have had opposition on that. No one even brought me a thing up. No one commented. As soon as someone became before this committee, brand new, that wanted to serve, red flags go up because her application just came in and it's too fast now. If there's more people, get them out here. We shouldn't be holding people back because she put her application in and now it's too fast. And now, you know, other counselors are speaking that there might be a problem with the process? It falls within the thing and for accusation to be made that Counselor Baumgartner is doing something wrong tonight. I mean, to what end? How many more? And to tell him to calm down? It's inappropriate. And I asked to regain this process back and look back at the precedent. And we talk about precedent. We've had vacant seats on our, on our boards for many, many months and years sometimes. And we can't fill them. And today, we are complaining that it's too fast. So I just, I hope this is not the direction we're going. Thank you.
Counselor Westerville?
Yes, I, I mean, I don't think we are moving too fast. I guess that's not what my concern was. My concern was that I didn't know enough about the process and how that works. There were no red flags per se that were drawn up or that were thrown up to me to cause my decision. It's, and I'm completely honest, I just was not, I guess, not fully informed of the process and how this would work anticipating that it had been through other committees before it got here. I guess I need to do a little more homework myself, but it's not because it's too fast and not because of a red flag. It's just because I need to understand the process a little bit better.
I think you, Counselor Westerville, Counselor Bordelon?
I just wanted to comment to Counselor Westerville. Unfortunately, you know, with you being in the Republican, us in the Democrat, it's my understanding that this application wouldn't, if followed the process through the Democratic Party, it would not even come through your party anyway. You're just now reviewing the application and making a decision based on the application. The process is being followed completely on your end as a, as a, as a separate party, you know, as a bipartisan effort of this committee. So I don't understand what process you're unfamiliar with, but if people are not aware of the process, then this should have been done a long time ago. This is not the time when you have someone before you, ready to sit on a seat. And then the, the, the town clerk throws all these red tape flags that she feels is the wrong with the process. When in fact, it's following the process and everyone's saying her application only came in the 7th and we should hold this longer. That's my problem. From the Democratic side, it's saying that this was moved along in such a way. No one was endorsed. Everyone was sent forward to not slow down the process. And then we get here and it's too fast and no one knows the process. This is a little concerning to me. So it, you know, my understanding, if Mrs. McCauser just stated, this application wouldn't have been endorsed by your party anyway. You would have saw it as a package for this committee. So there wouldn't have changed anything. So I just, again, if people have questions about the process, this should have been handled on the backend. Not when you have people coming before you, you're ready to take that seat tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bordelon. With that, we have Dana Semiraro, I believe, on the call. Dana, are you there?
Give me a second. I am, I'm here.
Hi Dana, how are you?
Great, thanks.
Very nice to see you. So Dana of 202 High Street of Mystic. She has applied to join the Community Development Advisory Committee. I will note that Dana submitted her application several months ago. And with that, I will give the floor to Ms. Semiraro if she has any brief statement to make. First and foremost, thank you so much for stepping up and offering to serve our community. Obviously, the community development. Obviously, the Community Development Advisory Committee does important work. And, you know, you, you have the floor if you would like.
Well, thank you, Counselor Baumgartner. Well, I'm interested in the committee. It's obviously interested, interested in the development of the town, particularly in portable housing and parking in Mystic and, and other salient problems at the moment, so I very much would like to be involved in that.
Wonderful. And do you have any questions for the Personnel and Appointments Committee?
I don't at this point. No, thank you.
All right. Any counselors have any questions? All right. So with that, I will entertain a motion to appoint Ms. Dana Semiraro of 202 High Street to the Community Development Advisory Committee with the term expiring February 7, 2024 as an alternate to the Community Development Advisor Committee. So moved.
Second, invite McBride.
All right, we have a motion second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye?
My hand is up, Counselor Baumgartner.
Counselor Bordelon?
Yep. So I, just for full fairness and, you know, so her application came in in two months. One came in in two weeks. Did her application go through the proper channels that everyone was still concerned about?
Uh, yes, it did. She, she received the endorsement from the Town Committee a few months back.
Is that on the agenda here?
Yes, it's, it's in the application.
So she was endorsed and moved forward?
Yes.
Okay, I think that's great. I just want to make sure everyone's being fair. Since, you know, there's a concern tonight and I, I think as, you know, Mrs. Duzant newly getting involved sits here, I think it just should be asked to make sure that that's, um, but once again, other people have been pushed forward that have not gotten the endorsement for time management purposes from the Democratic Committee where we push them forward. And so again, I don't know why tonight that is a concern. I don't care if it came in two months, a month before, how it got here, they're here. It's a bipartisan effort anyway to serve the community. And I just, again, I would encourage this committee to reconsider Shante Duzan and bring that vote back to the table. Thank you.
Uh, do we have Clerk McCauser on the call still? All right, seeing we do not, I again, believe in this was an application that that was submitted several, several months ago. If I'm not mistaken, I believe, Ms. Semiraro, you were on the agenda for a previous meeting. And so this, this has been, your application has been with, you know, we've had your application for some time. Is that correct, Ms. Semiraro?
Yes, it is.
All right. All right. So with that, I, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of appointing Ms. Semiraro to the Community Development Advisor Committee, please indicate by saying aye. Aye? Oppose, abstentions? Motion carries unanimously, 300. Ms. Semiraro, congratulations. We are very excited to have you on the Community Development Advisory Committee. Look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Counselor Baumgartner. I'm very enthusiastic. Looking forward to starting. Thank you.
Likewise. Thanks again. Have a good night.
You too. Thank you.
All right. Do we have Mr. Jay Loudon on? All right, we do not have Mr. Jay Loudon on. Mr. Loudon applied to be a, a member of the Shellfish Commission, an alternate member. He was not endorsed by the Town Committee for what reasons unclear, but having spoken with Mr. Loudon and obviously his application, his track record working in the shellfish industry and speaking with many shellfish commissioners, he is ready to serve. So with that, I will make a motion to appoint Jay Loudon to the, as an alternate of 17 Satcham Road to the Shellfish Commission with the term expiring 12/31/2026. So moved. Uh, do I have a second? Counselor Westerveld or McBride, is there a second on Mr. Loudon? Counsel? Can, there is, there is no second. Counselor Bordelon?
I just want for clarifying, if this one didn't go through, what makes this application any different than Mrs. Duzant's as far as process goes?
That this was already. So there, this application was submitted and was submitted to the Town Committee. The Town Committee did not take any action on this, on the application. I see Clerk, Clerk McCauser's hand is raised.
Thank you, Chairman. I just, I'm sorry, I had to start another meeting for the, uh, we're at the annex, so we're, we're having fun. You, you guys should be here too. I don't know where you are on your agenda, but there are, you have some expired. They're not expired. There's a 60-day time clock on every application that we receive in the office. If the party, the Republicans or the Democrats or the independents do not vote on to, to recommend a person for appointment, that clock gets to 60 days, it is set to your committee. That is the process. And so you do have quite a few. There, there was a revised agenda sent out yesterday that originally was sent in January and then again in February, but there are quite a number of people, Selfish Commission, Community Development, Zoning Commission, and Citizens and Police Committee. So you do have legitimate applications to, to review that are 60 days old. In addition to your, you did all those reappointments. Those were also proper. It's like chairman, the chairman of the committee actually are the ones, it's not the political parties. That's from the chairman or chairperson from the boards and commissions that recommend reappointment.
Thank you, Clerk McCauser. And it's my understanding that Jay Loudon was one of those applicants that had submitted his application some time ago.
Yes, that is correct.
It does not.
For Shellfish Commission.
Correct. And, and it does not appear that the committee or the Democratic Town Committee, you know, endorsed not, and it's not an endorsement against him per se, but it simply did not take action on his endorsement.
Right. And, and, and really for clarification on why things happen this way, every two years, we have a municipal election. In it, and so there's changes because of that with your committee. You, you didn't meet. That was another issue. That's, that's normal. This is normal. And also you have November, when, when I know the Democrats be, interferes with Thanksgiving, you know, regardless, and then you have Christmas. So I, I've seen this over the many years being involved where after a municipal election, there's a delay. It only feels like it's huge because people have received things they shouldn't have. And there's no hurry on any of these things. There's no, I haven't had. All but one committee didn't have a quorum. That was Groton Housing Commission, excuse me, Groton Housing Authority. They didn't have a quorum, which, you know, it's unusual not to have a quorum because we have Zoom, you know? Anyway, I'm giving you way too much information, but the more information you have, the better you'll be at making your decisions.
Too, too much information tonight led us to making or taking or some actions or elector up. So again, I, I come from the frame of mind, the more information.
So you really do have that one memo that has legitimately all of the, you've already done the reappointments from the chairman of the committee. So you already did that.
Understood.
Now you have, you have applications that have expired. You do not have any other nominations from the Town Committee of the Democrats, but you do have from the Republican Town Committee and the independent committee. So you have, you have work.
Absolutely. And we have a lot more work to get through. So I will note, and we, we had just passed, or just voted to approve Dana Semiraro to the Community Development Advisory Committee. A question did come up while you're away, Clerk McCauser, from Counselor Bordelon with respect to, you know, applying the same, you know, the same
Principle.
Principle to Ms. Semiraro as we did with, as we did to Ms. Duzan and although.
The difference, you know, the the difference is Ms. Duzan's application came in just a couple of days ago. And Mrs. Semiraro's application, let's see, I'll tell you exactly when it was, it came in and was forwarded. You can find it here. You have it, but I'll tell you. It was originally received December 9th, 2021. And 60 days from there would be February 7th. So she is ready for your committee.
Yes, and I, I did know all of those facts. I, I will simply note with respect to the, the vote, when we were talking about the committee vote, the GDTC has, as you mentioned, has not met for, for some time. And they have not meant to, to approve any applications or endorsements since I believe sometime in October and November. And some, Ms. Semiraro did receive the support from the nominations committee, but was not, the Democratic Town Committee as a whole did not take action on her application. So I, I think there, can you just clarify that point with respect to?
Yes, that all has to do with the timing. It's a 60-day thing, whether, whether. So we get, let's say, we've got Mrs. Semiraro's application in December, the 9th of December. It was forwarded to the Democratic Town Committee on the 9th of December. And, and the information on this application is incorrect because we never received Town Committee endorsement. We had communication from the nominating chair that, that's very well and good, but you can't, you can't just cart and bunch do something like that. So anyway, Mrs. Semiraro's application expired, you know, the timing for, I don't want to call it expired, it moved on to the next step of the 60 days to your committee. And you don't have to vote on her or you can, you know, it, it's, it, you're not waiting for the Town Committee on that one. You know, and you have a few, there's, there's a few people in that, in that same capacity that it has exceeded the time limit before an application comes to you. So you didn't have these before. This is something you have to understand. You don't receive these applications. That's not only, I want to confuse things. The answer to the question that you asked me, the difference between Ms. Dushant and Mrs. Semiraro is the timing. December 9th, 60 days later. And Ms. Dusant just applied on, on February 7th. So she hasn't, she's March, sometimes she gets to she'll be, she'll be voted on, probably in three days for now, so.
We know a, a simple request. I, I very much hope our committee does not receive any applications prematurely, especially as we're spent significant amount of time preparing for meetings such as tonight. So.
You bet. I'm going to make sure I pay attention to everything that goes out with my name on it. I just.
I have no doubt, Ms. Clerk McCauser, and, and thank you for answering Counselor Bordelon's question. Counselor McBride?
Yes, thank you, Chair. This, this is all somewhat confusing and disappointing in, in different ways. And I'm just wondering, what's the, it seems like we're making decisions that I feel may not be, I may not have enough information with the package that came out, you know, earlier today or yesterday is different than the one I received before the weekend. And I'm just, I'm, I'm wondering if it would behoove us to not move forward with then items at this time. And I don't want to slow, slow things down, but I mean, I, I don't feel comfortable with these decisions we're making. And I'm just wondering what your thoughts on, on moving this a few weeks? If it's been months, what's, what's a few weeks? So I'd just like to hear your thoughts on what if any, you know, what would be the, what would be so wrong with the delay to make sure we're making better decisions?
Um, well, we do have a few applications that went through the proper process, so I would like to get through the remainder of them because they, we would be holding them up for really no other reason, reason other than there were other applications that perhaps, you know, there again was a miscommunication on. So if we can be given that we're still going to have a lot of items that we will need to get through at a future meeting, I would like to get through those. That way we can lessen our workload for that next meeting because it will still be a pretty extensive meeting. And there's only a, if we follow that logic, there are only a few other applications. As I mentioned, Jay Loudon, he has had his application for months now for the Shellfish Commission. Has attended meetings and he's not seated as a member. And so, you know, I, I just feel like we are also, could be delaying the work that is being done on other commissions when, you know, some applications have gone through literally, you know, the proper process and, and followed the protocol, the right protocols. Counselor Westerveld, I know you had your hand up earlier.
I was reformulating my question, so I'm not prepared at this time.
Okay.
Chairman, you're, you are so right. Mr. Loudon's application was received on October 18th. So, you know, it was December 17th when his, his application was available for your committee.
All right. So with that, I, I will make a motion to appoint Mr. Jay Loudon of 17 Satcham Road to the Shellfish Commission on December 30th, with the term expiring December 31st, 2026. And this is for, as an alternate. So moved.
Second, Westerveld.
There's been a motion and second? Any discussion?
Ms. Duzant has her hand up. I'm not sure if that's from.
These are, this is just for counselors to, to speak on. All, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, motion carries unanimously, 00.
I have, I have staying, Chair.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. Motion carries 201 abstention from Counselor McBride. I will move on to Mr. Michael DeFranco of 160 Heather Glenn Lane of Parks and Recreation Commission with the term expiring 12/31/2024. His application is included in the packet. He is a Republican, so he did not go through the Democratic Town Committee process. Clerk McCauser, correct me if I'm wrong, but there.
Was endorsed by the Republican Town Committee as your memo states?
Yep.
You have, you have quite a few people. You have Karen Morton, Scott Erickson, Dana Parfitt for the Citizens Police Committee. They were endorsed.
I'm talking specifically with respect to Mr. DeFranco.
Right, but this whole memo has all the Republicans and Mr. DeFranco. I believe he's been attending committee meetings also.
Excellent. All right. So with that, I will make a motion to appoint Mr. Michael DeFranco of 160 Heather Glenn Lane of Mystic to the Parks and Recreation Commission with the term expiring 12/31/2024. So moved.
Second, Westerveld.
There's been a motion and second, any discussion? Seeing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, motion carries unanimously, 300. Um, so with that, I see we have a few names here as well who came for interviews. So uh, let's see. I believe we have, so counsel, hello, Counselor Jones, hello, Counselor Casiere, hello, uh, Mayor Melendez. I see we have Kyle Thaxton on the call. So I, as we discussed earlier, I am not comfortable making appointment at this point and given the, the, the way this meeting has gone, not comfortable moving forward with the, any of the appointments to the Citizens and Police Committee until the others have gone through or we have afforded the others, the opportunity to go through the proper process. Again, it is no fault of the applicants. The applicants did everything correct. So I think it would be irresponsible of us to move forward with any nominations without affording those individuals the right to, to do that. So with that, I will ask those who did apply just to, I will promote them as panelists for a brief Q and A because we will likely take action on these appointments at the next meeting.
Um, pardon me, Chairman, again, I know that you're really excited about people being here. What was I, my point was going to be that, oh, people that, that we. What was I, my point was going to be, um, that, oh, people that, that we, uh.
McCauser, Clerk McCauser, we, we have a very, I know, but we have a very busy agenda.
I know, but it's important that your committee asks the town clerk's office to invite people to speak at a meeting. You can't just invite them on your own. It has to go through a process.
Yes, and if I'm not mistaken, I, I believe the clerk's office is to invite, uh, all those who submit an application.
No, only if you ask us to, only if you ask us to.
Okay.
It has to be, it has to be a person who is, is nominated. To be appointed and all that stuff has to go first. You can't just bring anybody in.
Yes, no, no, and I, I had reviewed the policies and procedures with respect to the, the, um, personal appointments committee that your office had sent over. And so I'm, you know, again, it was my understanding that, uh, the invitation came directly from uh, the clerk's office. And so of course, you know, any applicant who does apply, uh, and I, I want to make that standard procedure. Um, they are to be.
I'm sorry, you have to, you have to vote on making standard procedures. You can't just change the process, please.
I'm, I'm quoting the, the policies and procedures he sent over. Um, so with that, I, I see Counselor Bordelawn's name.
Thank you. Again, I feel this is a bit embarrassing to this committee that if the, truly the town clerk's office made an error and sent things forward and it didn't follow the sixty day process, which is not in the council rules, but is part, part of a policy rule. Is that correct, Mrs. McCauser?
No, actually, the problem came with, with the, uh, nominating chair sending as if the committee had, the town committee had, had voted, and I'm a member of that committee and we did not. So I, I said, wait a minute, hey, 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 what are you doing, guys?
Right, no, but. And everybody said to move the names forward in the email that I am not part of. So the names got moved forward as a pack and they were not going to be endorsed.
Sorry.
Before that there was a problem with one of your workers, um, and there was a problem with a clarification on the days of holding the application for the sixty days or not.
Didn't have any problem with the sixty day issue. It was forwarding applications that hadn't been properly processed. Because a, a member of the town committee, of the Democratic Town Committee took it upon himself to give that authority. And I have it writing that the chairman said, no. So, you know, this is, we've already said this stuff. I don't want to go over.
I guess I'm just confused because I think before you go after people and their name, um, I think it's important to be clear. So the emails I have, we were asked, do you all want to move the names forward or do you want to endorse them? And it was told in the email that I have in front of me now that the names would move forward and we would not endorse anybody, but we're not, we were just moving forward for the process.
Chairman, Chairman Bumgarde, I just want to, I want you to, 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 we, to do something about. You know, what has been said, this should not be discussed any further. We're going to embarrass people, uh, and I don't want that to happen.
Right.
No hurry, there's no hurry on any of these people that are here tonight, except, you know, is, the committee right now has made some excellent moves and I think they've got some more to do, so we should get back to that.
Right. Well, this, this all started when you spoke before Shante Duzan's nomination and, and stating that her application didn't hold for the sixty days and you stated someone from your office did not give proper information. And that's where we're confused and so.
Because you're mixing things up and I don't think that I need to clarify myself to you at this time. We can do this later.
That's what you stated before, though, before Shante Duzan spoke.
Well, I will, I will say this again. This should not be discussed now. This is the chairman, chairman, this committee should stop this conversation.
Well, I, I agreed with that and that's why I was speaking up because based on your comments previously. Thank you.
Right. I think, thank you both. Um, with that, um, we have, um, Tim, uh, Tim, can you identify yourself? I'm allowing you to talk. Uh, Greg, can you identify yourself, self? Um, unclear if, if, uh, I, you're an applicant. We, we don't have your last name, so, uh, if you're an applicant, um, please identify yourself. Um, they, they are not identifying themselves, so I, I don't, uh, I, it is unclear whether or not there are applicants tonight.
Don't have applications for those people either.
All right. Uh, so with that, um, let's move on to, uh, just introductions. I understand, um, I'm Mr. Thaxton, Mr. Goodrich. I've applied to the Citizens and Police Committee. Thank you so much for applying. Um, I know you both have, I'm sure a lot of things, uh, have going on in your own lives, uh, this evening. So, um, you know, obviously you have submitted your application. Um, and we will be taking action on those applications at the next meeting. Uh, so, uh, maybe we'll start with Kyle. Again, thank you for, for applying, stepping up and serving on a local board. Um, as a millennial, as a young person, uh, it is so exciting to see young people getting involved in our town, stepping up and serving on our uh, local boards and commissions. So with that, if you have a few words, uh, and then I have a few questions, but maybe if you want to do a quick little introduction?
Yeah, sure. Um, can you, can you hear me? Okay, I just want to make sure.
Yes.
Okay. So, um, hi, uh, my name is Kyle. Um, I have been a resident of Groton since like twenty twelve, I think. Um, I'm a student studying political science and history at Southern Connecticut State University. Um, I wanted to join this board to get more involved in the Groton community. Um, and especially to do more as an activist, especially a social justice activist. Um, and yeah, um, I am a student leader on my campus at Southern, um, where I um, serve as the student liaison to, um, one of the faculty senate bodies we have, which is about, um, a body of sixty to seventy faculty senators who develop policies. Um, and I, as a student liaison, I represent the eight thousand undergraduate students there. So I wanted to, you know, I'm very involved on campus, but I wanted to give back to my community as well in Groton, um, especially since it's done so much to nurture me and to make me the person I am today.
Wonderful, Kyle. Um, I guess my first question would be, um, uh, what, what are three qualities you will bring to the Citizen and Police Committee?
So, three qualities that I hope to bring to, um, this new committee is, um, the first one is teamwork. Obviously, I think one of the most important, um, parts of being on a committee, especially through my experience at Southern, is that I think everyone on the committee needs to work in conjunction with one another. Um, especially since this is obviously a very important committee, you know, lives will depend on it, um, and, you know, um, community satisfaction depends on it as well. So I think it's important that we all work together as a unit to be able to provide the best, you know, possible advisory, um, proposals to ensure that the community and the police department, um, in Groton have a, you know, positive relationship. Um, a second trait or quality that I hope to bring to the committee is also my attentiveness. I think that I'm a very good, um, listener and observer, especially for the first few meetings. I want to listen and observe, you know, like I don't want to monopolize or dominate conversations. I want to listen to the concerns that are brought by, um, Groton residents and by the Groton Police Officer Department. Um, and also with that, you know, I'm very open minded, um, and I want to be fair to everyone's perspectives that, um, are brought up. And, um, you said three, right? Um, and then a third one, I like to think that, um, I'm a pretty good critical thinker. Um, I like to think that, um, you know, even though I'm not out of college, that I still possess a lot of critical thinking skills that have been ingrained within me because of, you know, Fitch High School, the Groton Public School System. Um, and, you know, as we're coming up with proposals or discussing issues, I think it's important to consider, you know, loopholes that exist, um, and also make sure that all the community stakeholders are in the conversation so that, you know, people are represented appropriately, um, and consistently. And also since obviously we'll be discussing a lot about police and, um, civilian accountability, I want to make sure that the literature we're using to guide the committee is reliable, credible and valid. So, um, those are three traits I hope to bring to the committee. Um, and yeah. You're, uh, you're muted.
I'm sorry, Kyle. Uh, so my second question is, a, a citizen or police officer approaches you and voices their concern about a topic to relate, uh, relating to police and community relations, uh, how do you respond?
Um, so naturally for me, especially with the work I do at my school with, um, city government and all the various other committees I'm a part of, is when, for example, when a student comes to me with a concern, my first reaction is to note it down somewhere. Um, preferably with an audio recording if they're comfortable with that. So then, you know, because if I'm typing or writing, I might be too focused on that and I might miss a few details. So that's my first reaction. And then the second step I would probably take is to bring that concern to the committee. Um, because like I said, one of the traits I want to bring is teamwork and cooperation. So if we're going to work as a unit together, then I want to make sure that the concerns that I'm getting are being brought to the committee to be addressed. And so that the committee as a whole and as a collective can work together, um, to discuss and deliberate it. And then after that, I would probably ask to investigate the concern more thoroughly as an individual or with the committee as a whole, so that we can reconcile, um, the individual's concern so that it can be appropriately addressed and remedied as well.
I, I think that's a great answer. Um, and my, my last question is, uh, what is your biggest priority? Or what, what will your biggest priority be as a member of the Citizens and Police Committee?
Well, there's so many, but, um, I guess my biggest one would be, um, increasing, um, in helping repair, um, public trust in, um, in, uh, the police department. I know that, you know, with everything that's been happening around the nation, um, a lot of marginalized communities are very concerned about um, police strategies and also how the police will view them. So I want to make sure that, you know, those stakeholders are being included in conversations and that maybe we can also work on social programming events that can, um, bring the community and police together to help essentially like improve, um, how, um, how the community and how the police view each other as well. And another thing I'm also interested in, and I'm not sure if the committee will tackle this issue, but I also would like to look at um, recruitment and retention of police of color, because I think representation in the police department is important. Especially if we're going to start, um, especially when, when the police deals with, uh, minority communities as well. So if that's something the committee tackles, um, I would be interested in exploring that as well.
Excellent. Well, I, Kyle, we very much appreciate you taking the time to speak with us. Again, um, we will be taking action on, uh, your application along with the others, uh, for the Citizens and Police Committee, uh, next month. But, um, we very much appreciate you taking the time, um, to join us this evening. And, um, if you have any questions, obviously you can reach out to the clerk's office or, uh, the, this, uh, or any counselor. Um, uh, should you have a question about local government or, um, you, you know, your application as it continues going through this process. So thank you again, Kyle.
Yeah, and thank you so much for having me. Um, thank you, everyone. So am I good till, um?
If, as long as if any other counselors, do you have, uh, any questions?
Not at this time.
All right. Uh, so, uh, no way. I think you're free to go, Kyle. Thank you again.
All right. Thank you. Have a good day, everyone.
Thank you, Kyle.
Um, I, uh, I see we have John Goodrich also here. Um, so, uh, he is, um, the floor is yours, but before I do, uh, Joe, Joe Scalvis, I can't pronounce your last name. I apologize. Uh, Joe. Um, are, are you here, uh, with respect to the application? Uh, Joe? Joe, are you there?
Looks like he's unmuted. I don't have an application for.
I'm, I'm only asking, uh, Clerk McCauser because, um, earlier, uh, Richard, uh, Dana was under Richard Semiraro. Um, and so.
Oh, exactly.
You know, and so, um, they're, we're like, nope, Dana, that's Dana. So, um, it could be a spouse's account or not, so, um. But, all right, I will. All right, we'll put him back in the room. Um, okay, a lot of folks tonight. It's unusual for a personal appointments committee, but, uh, there's a first for everything. Um, with that, I will, uh, welcome Mr. Goodrich. Mr. Goodrich? Yes, good evening, uh, Mr. Goodrich. Can you hear us all right?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Can you take somebody else and let me go next? I'm on my commute home. I'm about five minutes away from my house. And then that way you can have my undivided attention as soon as I get home.
All right, um, we, I don't believe we have anyone else here to speak. Um, I.
Um, um, let me, let me pull over then. Give me a second.
All right, are, are you all set, Mr. Goodrich? Mr. Goodrich? Uh, good evening, Mr. Goodrich. I, I think we have you on. Can you hear us okay?
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, we can hear you. Uh, there's just a little bit of a lag, but, um, you know, I, I think we can just start off, uh, with, um, you know, maybe an introduction.
Yes, my name is John Goodrich, thirteen fifteen River Road. Mystic, Connecticut, YRC.
Excellent. Um, so I, I, I'll ask the same questions I asked, uh, Mr. Thaxton earlier. Uh, what, what are three qualities you will bring to the Citizen and Police Committee? Um, Mr. Goodrich, we're having a lot of trouble. Mr. Goodrich, we're having a, a tremendous amount of trouble hearing you. Uh, is there any way, uh, you can maybe, um, just stay in a less, uh, in more static loca- I think we got you now. Can you hear us? I believe there's a bit of, uh, uh, lag right now. So, uh, unless you're really close, um, we may need to do this another time. Um, but, uh, Mr. Goodrich?
Yes, is this any better?
Much better. All right, so, uh, I, I.
Is this any better?
Uh, okay, yes. So we'll, we'll start with, can, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. So, all right, we'll, we'll start with my first question. Now, what are three qualities you'll bring to the Citizen and Police Committee?
Logical thinker, I, in anything. Um, and third, I think I have the ability to ask maybe questions that people are afraid to ask, ask those tough questions that, uh, that are needed.
We, I, I didn't hear your first answer.
Teamwork.
Teamwork, all right. Sounds good to me. And, uh, a citizen or police officer approaches you and voices their concern about a topic related to improving police and community relations. How do you respond?
Well, the first is to listen. The second is after you listen to make sure you've got all their concerns. Correct in, in, in their perspective. Third would be to research it. You know, make sure what's, you know, finally bring it to the commission.
All right. And, uh, what, what is your biggest priority as a, what would your biggest priority be as a member of the citizens and police committee?
Making sure that the community has a good view of our police department and that the police department has an understanding with the community.
All right. Uh, any, any other questions from counselors?
No, thank you. No, thank you.
All right. Uh, Mr. Goodrich, uh, sorry for, uh, the technical difficulties. Um, but, uh, you know, we appreciate you taking the time to join us this evening. Um, as I mentioned, um, we will be deliberating on the applications next, at the next meeting. Um, but should you have any questions with the process, feel free to reach out to the council, uh, or, uh, clerk McCauser and her office.
I will. And thank you and Counselor Westerveld and, um, uh, Counselor McBride for your time. And sorry for the technical difficulties.
It's all right. Uh, and thank you again, Mr. Goodrich. Have a good evening.
Yep. You too.
Bye now.
Bye.
All right. So I, um, and correct me, counselors, I believe that concludes, uh, just our business with respect to reappointments and appointments sans the, um, police, citizens and police committee. Uh, we will continue deliberations on the committee next meeting. Uh, I'd be remiss if I, uh, didn't mention, um, Mr., I'm sorry, Chief Fassaro. I know he is in the room. Um, thank you for attending and participating, um, as you are, uh, the only member that is already voted on. Um, so, um, so, uh, very much looking forward to, uh, working with you in, in the capacity as a counselor, uh, with, with the citizens and police committee. Uh, you have very important work, as you know, um, and, um, very excited to see, um, I, I think a diverse, um, um, uh, you know, a, a, a committee that has, um, diverse perspectives and, uh, many, um, you know, it represents a cross section of our community. Uh, and so, um, with that, you know, feel happy to, to give the floor if you have any remarks or, um, a state, a brief statement.
No, thank you, Mr. Chair and, and Counselors McBride and Mike Phil, uh, there's a couple of other town counselors on air as well. I, I look forward to it as well. Um, I know myself and our officers and staff are all, are very interested in how you go about your businesses, selecting the candidates for this committee. And, um, you know, I've said it before, and I, I, I think our officers demonstrated on a daily basis, we have an exceptional police department. And, uh, we're, we're hopeful that, uh, we have people that are committed to, um, uh, supporting that department and, uh, and helping pave a way forward. You know, I, I've heard some of the comments made tonight. I think that we've got, uh, I, I, I would say that we're, while there is work to be done, I think we've got a great, uh, baseline already established here. And I give the credit to our officers who go out there on a daily basis and no risk a lot and go out and try to perform their duties in the most honorable and, uh, and, uh, and efficient way possible. I think the credit goes to them. And again, looking forward to it and, uh, uh, looking forward to working with officers, uh, and members of the community that we serve. So, uh, oh, I guess we'll, we'll be doing this again at some point in the next, uh, month or so. It sounds like so. Any questions that I can answer for any of you or any, anything that's come up that, that, uh, I maybe have helped for?
Uh, uh, just saying for me, I thank you again. And likewise, Chief Sarr, uh, look forward to working with you. Uh, any, any questions, um, counselors?
No, thank you very much, Chief.
No, thank you, Chief. No questions at this point. Thanks.
Thank you, Chief. And as an aside, you should be hearing from me soon. Um, apparently counselors are doing write alons and I'd like to join, join one. So, looking forward to that.
We had, uh, we had a counselor last night and I'll let him share his, uh, his thoughts with you on how that went. He was a busy night for him.
Looking forward to it. Thank, thank you, Chief Sarr. All right. So, um, uh, Counselor, uh, clerk McCauser, is that your?
We just had a quick question. I just had a question. Did you, um, did you, your committee, I might have been out of the room. Did you vote on, uh, zoning board of appeals, Bruce McDermott?
Oh, you, Ed, thank you very much, clerk McCauser.
But you did do Mr. DeFranco, right?
That, that's why our town, we, you know, taxpayers pay you the big bucks. So.
Well, it's the same thing I've had for the last 12 years. So increase it.
Um, so I thank you, clerk McCauser. Um, I would be, uh, remiss if we, uh, did not make an appointment to fill the vacancy for ZBA. Um, I understand there were two applicants, although if we were to apply the logic, uh, or the precedent, and establish this evening, Mr. Filipina's application, um, should, should not be advanced. However, um, I have had a conversation with Mr. Filipina and, and he may have reached out to your office, Ms., uh, clerk McCauser, uh, regarding, uh, potentially looking at some other boards or commissions. Um, so, um, with that said, I am very comfortable, um, advancing, uh, Mr. McDermott's application as he is immensely qualified uh, to serve on the zoning board of appeals. Um, so, uh, with that, I will make a motion to appoint, uh, Mr. McDermott, uh, Bruce McDermott to the zoning board of appeals.
I can watch her out.
That, that's an alternate position.
Yes, I'm sorry. As an alternate position. Uh, and he lives at 328 New Ink Road. His, with the term expiring 1231. Um, and just for my records, who, uh, seconded the, um, motion?
Westerveld.
Westerveld. All right. Any discussion? Seeing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of appointing Mr. Bruce McDermott, um, of 328 No Ink Road to the zoning board of appeals as an alternate.
I, I.
Uh, any opposition, any extensions? Seeing none, vote carries unanimously 300. Congratulations, Mr. McDermott, on, um, your appointment or, uh, uh, to the zoning board of appeals pending confirmation from the town council. Uh, so with that, um, any, uh, other items or discussion from counselors before we close out this meeting? All right. Uh, I just want to thank the public, um, who is, has been in attendance and all the, those applicants who have submitted their applications to our committee, um, for obviously applying to serve on our local boards or commissions. Uh, it is thankless. Uh, counselors certainly understand. Uh, you know, these aren't paid gigs. Um, so, you know, very much appreciate you, uh, taking the time to apply and, um, reserving time to, uh, serve our, our local boards or commissions. We do very important work and, uh, as a counselor, very much look forward to partnering with you to, uh, move our, our, uh, the town of Groton forward for the years to come. Um, so with that, uh, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second, Westerveld.
All right. Um, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of adjournment, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, extensions, motion carries unanimously 300. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you again and have a.